I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please take the role, Mrs. Nash?
Mrs. Boland?
Here.
Mrs. Muntner?
Here.
Ms. Boatright?
Here.
Mr. Dring?
Yes.
Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Winslow?
Here.
You have a form.
I ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the middle of the world.
You may be seated. This is just a reminder to everybody on the podium and in the audience to turn your phones off. We don't allow phones in school committee meetings. Next, we have a moment of silence. Would you lead us in that, Mrs. Winslow?
Please keep the following individuals and your thoughts. Ginny Beiner, cousin of Rogers High School custodian Sal Gutteri. Lorenzo Stennis, cousin of Thompson Middle School parent educator Robin Massey. Willard McManus, uncle of Thompson Middle School teacher Jenny McManus. Paul Morris, uncle of Thompson Middle School clerk Deb Grover. Jesse DeCosta, uncle of Pell Elementary School teacher Stephanie DiAscentis. Joan Winkle, grandmother-in-law of Rogers High School teacher Emily Zilly. And Dr. Charles Shoemaker, former Newport School Committee member and Chair, and longtime advocate for preschool children. A moment of silence.
Thank you. So, Dr. Flowers is now going to read our mission statement.
The mission of the Newport Public School System, in partnership with students, families, and the community, is to provide challenging education with academic rigor and appropriate supports so that each student will possess the knowledge, skills, and character essential to productive citizenship, healthy choices, lifelong learning, and the ability to make a meaningful contribution to our global society.
Okay, thank you. It's good to always be reminded why we're here. Next, we have our Student Council update, and this will be Taylor Gray's last time with us.
Hello, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Taylor Gray, the Student Council President at Rogers. And I apologize for not being able to make the past couple of meetings. It's been busy and hectic past couple of months. During the last month alone, students have completed AP exams, received awards at the department award ceremony, re-elected board members of the Key Club for next year, and finished off an exciting season for spring sports. From senior nights to boys lacrosse making it to the semifinals, to unified basketball and baseball, both winning the state championship, there was never a dull moment. While the seniors are finished with school, the rest of the students are wrapping up their last classes this week and preparing for final exams later this week into next week. Today, some of the juniors helped out at the Thompson Dare Day with the fifth graders. And yesterday, the junior athletes specifically got the opportunity, as always, to go to Thompson to speak to the incoming freshmen about Rogers Athletics. Seniors are in the middle of the end right now, as it's that time of year where we've had Honors Night, Senior Launch Day, the Senior Sports Banquet, and just today was the walk-through, which was very nostalgic for all of us. And even now, we're still looking forward to Senior Prom tomorrow night and graduation this Thursday. It's truly been a great year, and though it's bittersweet, the end of the school year means students are ready for summer and excited about the new school, which has come a long way, while seniors are looking ahead to their life after graduation. And whether that be college, trade school, a career, et cetera, I know that the class of 24 will do amazing things. Thank you.
So, Taylor, on behalf of the entire school committee, we want to present you with this Taylor Gray embossed pen that I've heard if you use it for all your essays, that you'll be a straight A student. But I appreciate everything you've done. You've set a new standard for giving out information from the school. It's been really great.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to...
Oh, sorry. Does anybody have any questions for Taylor about the end of the year? Let's do that. Yeah, what is... Yeah, prom.
What is it?
Tomorrow's prom?
Yes, at Ocean Cliff.
Wow.
No.
How many students do you have going?
Um, I don't know. A lot.
Stephanie?
No, yes, we share a microphone. Really quickly, would you tell everyone what your plans are for next year?
Next year, I will be attending Stony Brook University, studying applied mathematics and statistics.
Okay, that's awesome. Anyone else? Well, good. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move 3.2 to 3.1 and 3.1 to 3.2.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Boatright. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so we decided to do this so we could help these kids get home early. So, I think as Taylor mentioned, our unified basketball team brought great pride and recognition to this district by winning for the second year in a row the state championship. And we are so excited and proud of you. You're going to have two jackets for some of you that were here this year and last year. So, when I call your name, please come up and stand along here so we can get the picture. And Mrs. Boatright will be handing out your certificates. So, we have Kevin Gomes. And why don't we wait... We have a long meeting tonight, so we'll wait until the end to give a really big round of applause. How about Wayne Carey? Trevon Correa. Adonis Pope. Jamil Edlin. Honesty Hazard. Curtis Sanders. Giovanni Mello. Darius Myers. Trevon Jordan. Peppa Davidus. And Margaret Phelps. Miles Ventura. And Darian Mata. And if their coaches are present, please come up. Crystal Fuerte. Phil Pace. Trinity Alexander. And Vicki Bishop. Madam Chair? Incredibly proud. I hear a lot of these...
Madam Chair, you may want them across the front for the cameras, too, so they can get... All right, lined up this way.
So, we are going to go move across the front here after she takes a picture. Yep, that's a good idea. We'll get you on the TV camera this way. So, go as far as Mrs. Winslow. Margaret, take them all that way. Okay, now you're on the cameras. Wave. So, would your coach like to come up and say a couple of words? Come on up.
Hello. Ooh, I'm kind of nervous. But I just want to congratulate them, working with them this whole school year. And just having the opportunity to help them out this year was actually, like, very cool. Coming from college, did not expect being a coach, especially for Unified. But these kids are so amazing, and it's been an honor to be coaching with them and being in their classroom every day. So, congrats. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Okay, now, we know all of you have homework, so if you need to go home, we're not going to be offended, okay? Thank you. Oh, yeah, you can come up. I should have invited you up anyway.
No, that's all right. I don't want to be invited up. Wait, don't go away, Darian. We had a late arrival, but please congratulate our lone senior of the group who was unable to make to our sports banquet. So, we have a lot of plaques for him, so we're glad he showed up. So, please give it up for Darian Mata.
So, next, we have more good news. And it's always good to start the meeting with good news. So, here we go. Next is our Teacher of the Year recognition, and this is going to go to Katherine Curulo. Would you like to come up here and stand, please? Okay, whereas Katherine Curulo started her Newport Public Schools' teaching career as a special education and elementary teacher at Cranston Calvert School in September of 1997. And whereas Kathleen Curulo holds a bachelor's degree in psychology from Merrimack College and a master's degree in special education from Providence College. And whereas Katherine Curulo is dedicated to creating an inclusive and supportive learning environment for all students to foster academic growth and personal development. And whereas Katherine Curulo has a passion to ensure that every child is engaged and instilled with the love of learning, feeling valued and supported in her classroom and the school community. And whereas Katherine Curulo is a mentor to teachers and student teachers, a volunteer, a valued leader of the school community, and demonstrates outstanding commitment to the success and lifelong learning of every student. And whereas Katherine Curulo was honored as the District Teacher of the Year by the Newport Public Schools' Teacher of the Year Selection Committee, therefore, be it resolved that Katherine Curulo be commended by the Newport School Committee as the 2025 Newport Public Schools' Teacher of the Year. And therefore, be it also resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the official records of the Newport School Committee, and the original be presented to Katherine Curulo as an expression of our appreciation for her performance as a true professional and outstanding member of the educational community, as one who has gained the respect of those whom she has served so well. Signed by the School Committee and the Superintendent of Schools. Would you like to speak?
Wow, thank you. I'm humbled, honored, full of gratitude, mostly full surprise, because I asked if I had to speak, and someone said no. So, here we are. Teaching is not just a profession, it's a calling, as you all were called. I just think tonight, we just need to celebrate all of us, teachers in Newport. One Newport. Let's go, Newport. Thank you, guys. Thank you all very much.
The next thing we're doing is a presentation by RHS, and it's called Spring Point. So, I believe that involves our principal, Jared Vance.
How we doing? So, what... Do you want to work it?
I'll do it.
I'll mess it up. So, what I'm speaking about tonight is our Spring Point visit that we had in March of this school year. For the last eight years, we've been partnering with the Bar Foundation. They've been extremely, extremely generous to Rogers High School with funding and supports and resources and things that we've used to kind of craft where we're going and, you know, moving from where we were to where we're moving into the future, trying to support our students the best that we possibly can. Spring Point is the organization that Bar uses to come in and evaluate their grantees and to see what they are... How the programs are running, what suggestions that they need. And it's not... It's not like Spring Point comes in, and if it's a negative review, Bar no longer funds. They actually look to provide more supports. And our... Most of our visits have been hugely positive, where the institution comes in and reviews what we've been doing and really highlights the successes of what's happening in our classrooms, the growth of our students, and the forward-thinking of our staff about what do we need to do next. So, in this presentation, the first few slides, I just wanted to be able to give some context to what Spring Point was. So, I pulled their mission. I pulled what they envisioned. They really look to support high schools for preparing students for success in the future. If you go a little bit next slide down, they do a lot of their evaluation using the indicators of school quality. So, it's coherent mission, positive school and classroom culture, rigorous and purposeful learning experiences, academic systems, student supports, college and career planning, and strategic development and use of resources. And so, the next slide down is just really describing what Spring Point is as it relates to the Bar Foundation. So, when you get down to Slide 5, the next one down. So, in the past, we've had two Spring Point visits prior to the one this year, and they were all SOBs. And that's a school observation visit. It's very much like a mini NIESK visit, where they come in, pull groups of students, pull groups of staff, go into classrooms, and kind of evaluate what we're doing and provide feedback. And so, like I said, the first two that we had, one was in 2020, then the next was in 2022. They provided us a lot of feedback, and they really kind of guided our next steps with where we needed to go. There were things that were... Where we had to look at, like diversity, equity, and inclusion. We had to look at some of our classroom practices, giving student voice, things along those lines. So, like, a lot of the things that we have put into place over the last handful of years are directly correlated to those reports. This past school year, on March 6th and 7th, they did what was called a PARV, which is a participatory action research visit. So, what that means is they come in with their team, but they also pull teachers, classroom instructors, be a part of that visit. And it was very much more targeted on a particular area of instruction in our building. And so, what we focused on really was, because of our curriculum implementation, we focused on the English department. And so, there were a number of folks that were a part of the English department that now were a part of that PARV visit, who then went in and did classroom visits, participated in interviews, talked... You know, they also did the same things that they did in the past with pulling groups of students and having small group kind of talks about the culture of the building and so on and so forth. So, with this last one, targeting our English department, targeting the English department, we came up with our problem of practice. And what that is, is what do we want to look at in the lens of how we function as a building? And so, the problem of practice during the PARV was, how might we use professional development, specifically common planning time, in order to align and share understanding of rigor and how we can implement our adopted curriculum with fidelity in order to improve test scores and our subgroup performance? You know, and that's just a picture from the whiteboard of the day when we were in 307. So, the visiting team was Luke Bauer, Matt Polarski, Marsha Newkirk, and Michelle Phillips. We've done a lot of work with Spring Point, not just in the building, but out doing visits as an administrative team, going to schools with these folks. And I'd have to say, they brought their A-team for us. Luke and Matt Polarski and Marsha have been deeply embedded in a lot of the work that we have been doing, and they are nationally recognized for the supports that they provide. The QR code that's in the presentation just brings you to their profile pages on the website, so you can really get a better detailed picture of who these folks were when they came in and what they... You know, their work experience is. So, we've visited many, many classrooms. And they weren't all English, because we also wanted to have some comparisons about what was happening in our English classes with our, you know, curriculum implementation and what we were looking for there, but then also looking at, like, math. I believe we popped into a few science classrooms just to get a wide... You know, get a wide spectrum of what the experience is. Spanish as well, world language. So... My mic's a little small. And so, this happened all in that first morning throughout that day. And then, about around noon time, the group pulls back and went back to the Marriott over here to kind of debrief with the teachers that were a part of the visit and all the information that was collected. Because when they go into each classroom, they are... We are looking at what the classroom instructor is doing, what the kid... How the kids are responding. But they're also just taking... They call them low inference notes. So, they're taking notes on specifically conversations that are being had and what is the dialogue back and forth between the teacher, between the students, and then ask some probing questions to students in the room, looking for their responses as well. And so, they pull a large, large amount of information. The overall report was probably between 150 to 160 pages worth of low inference data. So, we really... You know, when we get that report, we really have to kind of cull through it to see what the trends are and whatnot. But when we went back to the Marriott with the group, we discussed the information that was happened, that we pulled from our small group panels. So, if you go down to the next slide. And so, those were things like the student discussion panels, also teacher discussion panels, on top of the low inference reporting from classrooms. So, there was a lot of information to really, really talk about. And so, what we focused on in the group as a part of some of the takeaways from this were, how can we use this information to better use our common planning time? And in particular, with our curriculum implementation, some of the trends that came out of those classroom visits were things like wait time. Right? So, we... Our staff does a great job with delivering questions, but sometimes we are so... We so want to move forward with the instruction that wait time where kids have to process isn't always the optimal. So, that was a trend that kind of came through. And then, also, making sure that we're dialing up our questioning and critical thinking kind of questions or strategies, really making kids kind of dig into the content, think about what their responses are, think about what the product they're trying to create is, and then allow them to move forward. And some of the other pieces were understanding the why of the task and what was the student grouping of the task. Were there things that were happening that maybe should have been an individual student's work? Or sometimes there was a small group, but maybe the task itself did not lend itself to small group work? And so, it just kind of... It just kind of made the instruction a little bit wonky at the time. And also, one of the things that we've been talking about for the last year is about our rigor and what does productive struggle look like? Now, we have hugely, hugely compassionate staff that really understand where our kids are coming from, the home environments that they go back to, what their needs are. And it's hard, as an adult, as a teacher, as an educator, to watch kids struggle and maybe not have an answer immediately. And so, what we do is we either scaffold. Scaffold too much where the kids, you know, come to a response, but that they have not really worked through it, so the information doesn't necessarily get embedded. And it truly comes from a place of compassion and understanding. But we do. We also need to be able to keep pushing our students to grow and perform. You know, so, in the end, the major takeaways is we need to make sure that we have regular and consistent common planning time. We schedule out CPT with purposes and agendas. Then also to look at some student work review or data from lessons or data from, like, PSAT/SAT results. Also to try and foster strategies where students are allowed to productively struggle. So, sometimes, kids need to kind of work through concepts and not just be helped forward. When they do that, or they have dialogue with their peers, or they really have to dig in, that helps the information get embedded into their brains much, much longer and much more meaningfully. So, in that... So, with our, you know, purpose of CPT, it's looking at what does productive struggle look like? If we're using strategies that help to foster productive struggle, are they working? So, how do we analyze those pieces? You know, looking at trying to improve our questioning and our wait time. All of these things in and of themselves will also foster greater student engagement. You know, having them have to kind of work through the material and, you know, collaborate with their peers, have discussions and really dig in, and not just have things kind of like given, will foster engagement. Kids will buy in a little bit further. They'll be engaged in the lesson longer. From the visit and through these, you know, common planning strategies, should be improving teacher buy-in and ownership. So, what we've been doing is a lot of these things that I outlined beforehand, we're modeling with our English department. And from where we were in the beginning of the year to where we are now with how those meetings are running, it's a great improvement. And there is a lot of real focus on student growth, data, next steps, talking about lessons that are happening in each other's classrooms, what's working, what's not. But it's really specific and targeted in that department. And so, our goal is to use kind of the model that we've been piloting in the English department and start to scale up, you know, to math, because they're in the same process as English with, is with the curriculum implementation, and then move on to science and social studies and world language and so on. And so, that now the building on a whole is using these approaches as a team, working together, which should, in the end, allow our students to improve in success and develop their skills deeper.
Are there any questions? Mrs. Winslow?
I was just curious to know, year over year, and this is the third visit from Spring Point, what are some trends that you've... Or concepts, I guess, that you've seen improvement on, or things that they're still asking us to work through, or anything new that you discovered this year?
So, some of these things have been trends, have come through the other reports as well. We've done, as a building, we've done a nice job addressing some of the other concerns... Not concerns, but suggestions that they made earlier, with like improving student voice, right? So, we think about the Diversity and Relevance Committee, our Student Integrity Board, our, you know, how that group of students work through, like, policy. Giving kids ownership of the environment more so helps to foster a more positive culture in the building, also allows kids to buy in a little bit further. in the building, also allows kids to buy in a little bit further. So we've done a lot of work on student voice. And we've been doing a lot of work with things like instruction partners with, you know, Ms. All would talk about, where their main focus has really been about that classroom instruction. So those, those things are all kind of pairing together nicely as we move forward. I don't know if I answered your question or just talked to your questions.
It's whatever you want to say on that topic, basically, how we look at the progress.
One question on, as the School Building Committee co-chair, has there been any conversations with them about how to move into the new building and some of the benefits that that might bring? I know it's a whole year away, but...
Yeah, so there was, honestly, there was some discussion about that and how that also is impacting the learning environment presently, which will also shift when you don't have an active construction site on campus. You know, also going into a new building that will, you know, where kids aren't worrying about being cold, being hot, where their rooms are, the condition of the building, and knowing that the community values the educational experience of our kids to make that kind of investment in their education, like those are the things that we talked about, but it really wasn't really around like the classroom instruction piece.
Okay, thank you.
It's time to get those kids excited because, and the teachers, I know they are getting there, because the collaboration spaces that we're going to have in that school are just going to be awesome.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's going to really feed right into what you're talking about tonight.
Right, that and also the integration of the career tech into the, into this academic areas and so on.
Yeah, that, that unification of the two buildings of, you know, NatTech and Rogers will be huge for the culture in the building. You know, it, you know, I know it's the same campus, but it really has been a rift for, for a while between NatTech, Rogers, and we've done a real, done a lot of work on trying to bring that, that together, but it is really hard when it is a separate building. So to have all of those career tech programs in the building with us will help to kind of unify the campus much, much further.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Vance. Okay, so next, we're getting probably the reason why a lot of you are here probably are interested in some public comment. Could you tell me how many people are signed up?
We have two under public comment and six under the agenda item for the budget.
Okay, so we have two, so, so...
Seven, I'm sorry, under the budget.
Six under the bud, budget and two?
Two for public comment budget, yes.
Seven under the budget, okay. So right now under public comment, just so you know, you walk up to the rostrum after receiving recognition, recognition from me, state your name and your address, and if you don't live in Newport, it'd be good to just tell what school you are signed to, and then you can comment on your issue you wish to address. So we will not be addressing you this evening because it's not on the agenda, so we just will be listening to what you have to state. You have three minutes, and we're not going to start the time this time until after the person comes up, states their address, and begins talking. I think that'll give just a few extra seconds because we want to, it, it's not fun to be up here and having to tell people to stop talking, so. All right, so first on the list, do you want to call them?
Shannon Matos.
Tell us who you are and your address.
Shannon Matos, and I'm at 37 Sunset Boulevard.
Go ahead.
That's right, okay. I wasn't expecting to see so many. I just want to say before I start talking that there's a lot of you that I've had conversations with that know my standpoint and know the things that have happened, and so like, please don't take anything as like a personal attack, because this is not what it's been. If you have any questions, want to have a conversation with me, go ahead, but, you know, it's, this is not going to be like a nice warming speech. Colleen, first I want to say that, you know, eventually you're going to be retiring and living your best life while the student body is paying the price of cuts and millions of dollars in debt. So please make sure that you're prior, prioritized, prioritizing the success of our kids, and that that comes first. We're making these decisions and including the people who have firsthand knowledge of what their students need. And, okay, sorry, I'm nervous. The foundation of education starts at the elementary level, this is where the kids are learning the most, and as they move on to the high school, I mean, the middle school and the high school level, you know, they build on the fundamentals that should have already learned at an elementary level. And for cuts to be made for help that is needed for these little kids that are in such a crucial development stage is just mind blowing. It, it, it really is. I think your staff probably deserves more than just, this is what it is and accept it as it is. It's an open situation for everybody. You're going to have teachers that are overworked, underpaid, parents getting mad because, you know, something's missing from the class, teachers are, are getting mad. It, it's just going to be an ill effect all the way down the line, and it's going to just cause more issues. The mission of the Newport Public School System is false advertisement. The expectation for our kids academically is extremely low, and it's very sad. It was, it's always been low, but it's even more low than it ever has been. That has to change immediately because low expectation creates low performance. I'm also hearing that there's going to be a second vice principal hired to the high school. Is there a need for two vice principals? Usually going to cut needed services to students to add vice principal positions. It doesn't make sense. It just does not, it seems like a waste of money and it doesn't make sense. You know, and it's, if one's not working, get rid of them, bring in the next one. You know, there's no need for two. When does a high school have two vice principals?
So that is three minutes, so you're just going to have to have one last statement and we'll, we'll end it there.
Um, well, that went by pretty fast, so can, can everybody take a shoe off and bring it to me while I finish this?
No, I think we're going to have to leave it at that.
Oh, okay, no, no, so you're, no, yeah, sorry, but I'm going to kind of continue.
I know what you're, I know what you're...
Yep, so why the 11 and 12-year-olds have to sit in a class and be subjected to abuse from teachers? You're having teachers make kids take off of shoes? Like, come on, can I have, I've never been to a meeting...
It's three minutes, what?
She's saying I can go ahead. I'll make it quick.
She's not in charge, so she can't say it. But I, I understand, everybody on the school committee does, and I, I think we took care of that, so.
Yeah, no, you actually didn't, because he's still doing it.
We're done, okay, thank you.
He's still doing it, nope. And Mr. Browner, ban me...
No, 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 we are not allowed to disparage...
I don't care, Mr. Browner banned me from emailing anybody off of the Newport School emails, causing me to miss 504 meetings for my son, not knowing that I have IEP's meetings for my little kids. Like, where is this?
Can we turn off the speaker?
If you cannot control your staff to treat these kids right and not have some sort of expectation...
Mrs. Matos, I don't want to be rude, but you...
So I don't care, I'm used to it. If you cannot have your staff treat these kids right, how can you expect to, how can you expect for test scores to rise while these kids are sitting in school absolutely miserable?
We're going to take a three-minute break right now.
Their, their mental health is in danger, their emotional stuff is, is that aligned? So you, that's what I'm saying, this is what I get. I don't care if it's a meeting, this is, it, it's nonsense.
It's a rule, it's a rule.
I don't, I don't care about the rules, so you don't care about the rules when you're breaking, when you're breaking, when your school is breaking policies, putting kids in positions, in rooms...
You're more than welcome to put this into writing and...
How many times? I've done it a million times.
Okay, enough, enough.
No, it's not enough. It's not enough. You got teachers throwing kids at, throwing dust at kids, throwing, and then move to middle, to the elementary school where kids are voiceless. Like, it, it, like, it's ridiculous. And I'm not trying to be a jerk, like, and I know there's a timeframe, but that was the fastest three minutes I ever, I ever had in my life, like, literally.
Thank you.
No, no, it's not thank you. It's not thank you at all, because then you have like these datas and statistics that Ms. Ralpha, it doesn't care, doesn't care that the kids are, yep. I'll just come back every week until I make my point, every month. Was everybody comfortable with me asking to have a shoe removed? No. Imagine the damage that's being done to kids.
There's a rule that gets three minutes.
I don't care about the rules, I don't care, I don't care. When my kids are abused and kids that I love in the school and things are happening, you cannot have well-performing kids when things are happening in the school system that no one wants to address.
I think that we need to have you sit down because you've been up here actually more than six minutes now.
I don't care if it's 20 minutes.
There are rules that we have to apply by and...
Because I'm not, I'm not going nowhere. None of you are shutting me up.
Okay.
Like, I'm not going nowhere.
All right, we don't want to have to call help to come in, so we're asking you to please sit down.
Oh, so is that what she wants to do? She wants to go call the police because, is that what she did?
I don't, no.
I don't, they be coming yet. So, because I, I really don't care because I'm, I'm standing up for these kids and these teachers that have worked hard, and just recently, my son's graduated, right? I had a teacher tell me that he ain't shit, he's going to be...
Okay, we can't use bad language in here.
Well, all these teachers that have come up to me saying how good my kids are, you still have teachers that have these ideas about these kids, and my son walked into the office with his hand in his pocket, his secretary was scared for her life because he had a wrapper in his pocket. It's absolutely crazy, crazy.
I'm sorry that, you had to do that. Okay, Mr. Sherman. By the way, I did want to also, now and when we get to the budget, it's important that nobody use derogatory terms or, or personal attacks on people, we'll have to stop that conversation, but we also want to give you a chance to say what you want to say. Go ahead, Mr. Sherman.
Hi, I'm Erin Sherman, parent and a teacher at Pell, parent of kids at the high school and middle school and graduate. I'll keep this brief, so for those of you that know me, that in itself is the miracle of the evening. Currently I service, and I guess I want to post this as, this is a question, I don't know what the answer is, so I'm referring to you guys. Currently I service 49 students for math intervention in grades one to four. My job, as I tell the kids every time they come with me, is to work on their foundation. Their teachers have built these amazing houses, and I always say if you're in fourth grade, you've got a four-story house. My job is to find those holes in the foundation so we don't continue to build on a weak foundation, because everyone knows, once you get high, far enough up, without a foundation, it falls apart. So currently I service 49 students in grades one to four for math. We've heard a lot about plans for literacy coaches and different things like that, but math hasn't really been said, and I'm pretty sure that's one of the areas we need to work on. So my question is this, with 46 of my, about 46 of my 49 kids making progress using the district provided intervention program that you guys have chosen as something that works, my question is, when kids ask me next year at Thompson or at Pell, who will be helping them build their foundation, and will they still be using the program, what do I tell And I, I, so, I don't know what the answer is, so if someone has an answer, I'd love to hear it, feel free to email me, and I think I'll just keep the, my last minute of just think about that, because who's going to, what are we going to tell them? They can't subtract, so we can't do division in fourth grade. Who's going to teach them that? Thank you.
Everything that I say is legit, and I have backup for every single thing.
Okay, so that was our, last of our public comment, is there?
Uh, yes, everyone else is asking to speak about the budget.
And then we'd like to speak when we get to the budget, okay. So next is you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move, remove, sorry, that we may, I'm going to start again, I'm going to make a motion to remove 6.1, 6.6, and 6.12 from the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Yes, second.
Second. Okay, seconded by Mrs. Winslow. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? So now we are on...
6.2.
6.2. A second to get there.
You ready?
Yep, okay, this is a request that, there's, okay, we're good.
I'd like to make a motion to request approval of, from the, for the University of Rhode Island Smile Program Participation Agreement for the school year 2024-2025. All three schools will participate in the program during the next school year. If approved, the funding sources are Title I for $5,478.30, Local for $5,478.30, and a grant for $5,478.30.
Do I hear a second? Seconded by Ms. Boatright, all right. Is there any discussion on this? Any questions, Mrs. All? Do you want to just explain it very quickly?
Sure, the funding will go to support the teachers that run the program in the afternoon as well as supplies and any activities that the students will do in the Smile Program.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Uh, does this provide transportation for the kids who have no ability to get home after school?
Does the, the...
The program, do we have transportation for the Smile?
We have after-school transportation.
Thank you. Can I just ask, how many years have we been doing this program? Do you know? It's many.
I don't know of the...
Quite a few.
At least five or six?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Could be a lot more than that, though, I've only been here two, so.
Been a lot, all the years I've been here it has been, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Go ahead. Okay, hearing, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, passes. Okay, 6.3. Go ahead, ready?
I'd like to make a motion to request approval of an agreement with East Bay Educational Collaborative for Foss Science Kits for the 2024-2025 school year. The Foss Science Program provides structured lessons aligned to the NGSS Next Generation Science Standards. Funding for the materials will be provided through Title I for $13,940 and Local for $2,000, $4,280.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Flowers. All right, discussion. Sol, do you want to?
Sure, this is for our science kits in grades K through eight, and this will be most likely our last year with this particular program as we move to one of the RIDE-approved high-quality curriculum in the next two years, so this year or next year.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, now we have 6.4.
I'd like to make a motion to request approval of the inter-agency agreements with Newport Community School for one behavior specialist at each school as follows. Pell Elementary School for $76,172.59, Title I funded. Thompson Middle School for $68,086.59, locally funded. And Rogers High School for $76,172.59, locally funded.
Do I hear a second? Seconded by Dr. Flowers. All right, is there any discussion on this one? Okay? Yes?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Is there any reports we've seen from past years on what is successful that they've done with this is? So as we spend this money out... As we spend this money out, you know, over $200,000 here, I don't know whether they think they made success or not, or what the results were.
So I think that if you had wanted, you know, wanted that, we would have had to have asked, you know, for that kind of information before the meeting tonight. So I don't think that you came prepared to answer that.
We'll, we'll be happy to put that together for you and send it to you.
All these programs that we spend money on, they should come back and give us a report personally.
Yes, and usually that does happen, Mr. Leary. There is a report sent.
Like, I've never seen some school, I know it's not the same subject, they offer, never seen it.
We have that data. We can send that to you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, passes six to one. Okay, next, 6.5. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion for the second reading passing of Policy 1510, Article One, Organization. The policy is recommended by the Subcommittee for consideration and approval by the Newport School Committee.
We have a second. Seconded by Ms. Winslow. All right, is there any discussion on this? This is the second time, second reading? Okay, no discussion? Nope, there you go.
I just want to say I voted against this last time. I don't feel like it's broken, so I see no need to fix it, so I'll vote against it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just, I couldn't, Jim, I couldn't really hear you. Your mic is pretty far away. Does anybody need a refresher?
No, I just said I voted against it on the first reading. I don't think it's broken, so I don't see any need to fix it. So I'm gonna be a no vote again.
Thank you for that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I also didn't vote for it, and I would not vote for it again. Why don't we take the minute to explain what it is? Because somebody's probably in TV watching, saying, "What the hell are they talking about?" You know? So why don't we take a minute and explain? I know, I can read it here, but, you know--
Okay, so there were two changes to this policy. The first was actually suggested by committee member Dring. We have an organizational meeting every December, and it's usually the second Tuesday of December, right after the election. That's when we would elect our chair and vice chair. But in the past several election cycles, we've had an inauguration happen with the city council on December 1st. So we haven't yet had a chance to have that meeting. So this first change to the policy was to just say that we'll have an organizational meeting before the December inauguration. That's the first change. The second change was suggested by a few different people that we consider having one election for chair and vice chair just after the election, and that those two people can serve two-year terms, much like the city council does. And to avoid the, it's a tough decision to make. It's, the, the position of chair especially is an incredible amount of time, and it's really, comes down to, I think, the person who has the best relationship with the whole committee and can commit the time to it. You know, it, so that was it, to just do it, try it for a two-year term instead of redoing that each year. So those were the two changes to the policy.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
I was just gonna say, Ms. Winslow, I have no issue with the first part, which was my suggestion. My issue is the second part.
I wanted to remind you.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
As I said, I would not support this. I've been doing this a long time. Just for the record, sometimes you need to look and switch gears when you're doing something. Just for the record, I know it's not the school grade, but the city council in Newport, for the last 20 years, has not had a back-to-back mayor. Now, that's not derogatory, it's something that's here or not. It's just saying the message that people want to move in a different direction. People have been elected that were mayor and came back and made mayor again every other time, but there's not been a back-to-back mayor in Newport in 20 years. I think we should be doing the same thing, we make some changes. So I'm not gonna support this at all.
But the mayor serves for two years, and that's what we're trying to align with, rather than having to vote within our two-year term twice. So you vote, you get in, we pick our team, you're on for two years. If you win reelection and you want to put your hat in to be chair again, great, but it seems very, it just seems like it causes a lot of drama that is unnecessary, and if we just keep it aligned with the city, we can have two cohesive years as a term and a team, and then every two years, we can reelect a new chair, much like the city does with their mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead. That's close.
Yes, the, there's one paragraph here that really should be read maybe again, where it says, "All members elect who wish to serve as chairperson or vice chairperson are strongly encouraged to share reasons and qualifications at this meeting for the consideration of the entire committee." In my mind, and perhaps shared with others, this brings about the transparency, it removes the chance that discussion and decisions could be made outside of the official meeting. That would make things very, very clear, and it would give any people sitting on the school committee the chance to say, "This is what I would like to do, and these are the reasons why." And it can be as objective as it can be. This is why I felt that this was very well-written, and some of the other information was just extraneous. So to me, this makes more sense than what we had before. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Flowers, is there any other comments on this before we vote? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so two are opposed. That in the record. Okay, next, we have--
6.7.
6.6 has been taken off for tonight, so 6.7.
I'd like to make a motion to revise the school calendar for 2024-2025. The revision includes three right-to-read days, September 3rd, March 12th, and March, sorry, and May 14th. Teacher professional development will be held on September 10th, and a clear notation for mandatory makeup days to align with Rhode Island General Legislation 16-11 dot four dash six is also provided.
Okay. Are there any questions about the calendar, the revised calendar? Oh, did we have a second? Oh, second, I'm sorry. Seconded by Ms. Winslow.
And then I do--
Not even speak.
Okay. I, so Juneteenth has become a holiday, a federal holiday in America, and is now a holiday in the state of Rhode Island, and it seems to love to show up right at the end of our school year. So, sure, it's very hard for the teachers to keep the kids engaged, but for anyone who hasn't thought of it already, I just wanted to throw out a suggestion that perhaps we try to all, as a school community, celebrate Juneteenth and incorporate into a, you know, a cross-curricular lesson, that holiday and why it's meaningful, and encourage your kids to participate in the holiday, and then come back to school on the last day of school and tell us what they learned or what was important and why it was meaningful, and, and share that, and just so that the last day of school, it's hard to not make it a throw away, everyone wants to get out, but make something of that holiday in the end of school.
Okay. All right. Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, aye.
All right, 5.8.
5.8. Speak, sorry, my computer's low.
Got it?
No, it's still recording. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to request the approval of the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Okay. This, seconded by Ms. Louisa Boatright, and now we're going to have, let's have Mr. Gonzalez speak first before we go to comment or--
Thank you, school committee members. This was our most challenging budget year since I've been here because of forecasted reductions that were provided to us by the state in, in January. We have had two updates since the January update. The latest information that's on the balanced budget today for review and discussion is the information provided by RIDE in April. That number, the forecast is more promising in the, assuming it gets passed by the Senate. They did share out a document last Friday on the 6th that will potentially increase the aid by about $300,000. That is not yet finalized. They haven't yet determined exactly what our MLL categorical number will be and what the final state aid number is. I share that only because I prepared this document, the budget, in the memo that, the corresponding memo, as of May 28th. That was the latest and greatest information I had at that, that point in time. So there is a potential to receive an extra $300,000 once the state budget is passed for our general unrestricted state aid to Newport. Okay. There were some other updates that we've made. Our, the original, I did my best to be transparent as possible with the budget draft that I shared. I did not change the page two, I believe it is, that was constant since our January. Those are restructuring items, retirements, we know about, changes that were anticipated in our budget. We did have some updates regarding our property and liability insurance that were just realized in May. The trust gave us some information, which helped our budget by about $40,000 based on the previously submitted draft budgets that we've discussed over the past few months. The most important change to the draft budget here is the pathway that we've, I've outlined on page three, which identifies alternative funding sources, so that way we didn't have to make additional cuts to, to the budget. And if I can just speak to that, maybe for a minute. There were, I, I've outlined it, I think, clearly, it's clear to me, but if you have any questions, please just yell it out. Page three, please. So we have, I've categorized them by building. We have a pause on filling a custodial position at Rogers. There was an update provided by the NAC Tech Director based on enrollment. At the time, we may not need hospitality. The next page. This is, this is, this was, you know, kind of the update, the focus that we had for the last month and a half or so on, on developing our balanced budget. We've identified some additional grants. So there's the, the last four lines there at Rogers, positions that would be funded with alternative sources, not necessarily funded through the general fund. We've included the, the grants there. The BAR grant was going to support three positions, and we have a portion of some MLL teachers for the MLL categorical grant, which, just as a reminder, over the past couple of years, that MLL categorical has quadrupled for the district. Two years ago, it was about 50,000 or 60,000. Last year, it was 250,000. In January, there are forecasts in six, excuse me, 469,000. And as of about a week ago, it's still right around 400K in MLL categorical. That is a pretty specific restricted grant. The next grouping I have is the Thompson School Building, and ideas that we had to help balance our budget. We have a reduction of a para there. Again, we were going to mimic some of the L teachers to be supported with the MLL categorical, then lean on some of our consolidated resource planning. Those are annual allocations for IDEA, Title I, Title II, Title III. Those come into the district annually. We approximately get about $2 million in, in those funds. We also had some children graduating from EBCAP that was going to have a pretty healthy savings on our transportation forecast. I'm sorry, EBECK, I'm sorry. In the last section is Pell. Pell, again, we mimicked some L supports from the MLL categorical. We, we decided to pause on a, filling a custodial position, not eliminate, just pause. That was gonna help us get into the next fiscal year. We had a reduction of a para, the TMS secretary, as the superintendent just pointed out, I put in the wrong bucket, belonged in the TMS grouping. And then we have a revision to utilize some CRP funds to initiate a co-op with Salve for the BCBA work that would be done district-wide. In addition to that, we were revising our spending plan for a DOD EA grant that was given to Pell, and that would support some para educators here in the building. In addition to those forecasted savings changes, we also earmarked an additional $150,000 from the educational fund to help us balance the budget without having to make any additional cuts. If it's okay, I'd be open to questions from the committee.
Okay, so I'm gonna invite anybody on the panel that wants to speak now here, but if not, we can listen to members of the community and, and then also then have the opportunity to respond. I think that's why they decide to speak.
Madam Chair, I'd rather hear from the community first before we speak personally.
Okay, that's good. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. So we'll come up in the order which you signed up, and we won't start the clock until after. What's that? Sorry. What? Okay. First, we have Robert Toribio. We'll wait till we get up here and get them identified before we start the clock.
Madam Chair, just to let you know, that's what we usually do. We wait until they get up there, just to know. Okay. We don't start until they start.
Hi, my name is Rob Toribio, and I live at Two Rollin' Road. I'm here tonight to tell you how important literacy is to our students' academic success and lifelong learning, and how reading teachers play a critical role in nurturing this vital skill. Keeping them in our schools is not just beneficial, it's essential for our students' well-being and future success. In the words of Superintendent Jermaine, "It's what's best for kids." Every child's learning, every child learns differently, and while some students grasp reading quickly, others require more time and specialized instruction. With, with their individualized approach, reading teachers provide the personalized attention these students need. They have the expertise to identify specific reading difficulties and can tailor their teaching strategies to meet each student's unique needs. Without this targeted support, struggling readers will fall behind. Reading teachers, they're what's best for kids. Reading is the key to learning in all subjects. Students who struggle with reading often face challenges in other areas like math, science, and social studies, where literacy skills are crucial for understanding content. Reading teachers help bridge this gap by providing the intensive support necessary to bring struggling readers to grade level. This support is critical in leveling the playing field, ensuring that all students, regardless of their starting point, have the opportunity, opportunity to succeed academically. Reading teachers, they're what's best for kids. When reading teachers pull out students for targeted instruction, classroom teachers can focus on the needs of the remaining students. This collaborative intervention ensures that all students receive the necessary attention and instruction. The strategies and interventions developed by reading teachers often influence classroom practices, enhancing the quality of instruction for all students, not just, not just those who struggle with reading. Classroom teachers are tasked with meeting the diverse needs of all of their students. Reading teachers bring a depth of knowledge and expertise and complement the skills of classroom teachers. They collaborate with teachers to develop and implement effective reading instruction strategies and support the integration of literacy across the curriculum. This partnership enhances the overall quality of education and ensures that every student has access to the best possible reading instruction. Reading teachers, they're what's best for kids. Keep reading teachers in our schools is not, keeping reading teachers in our school is not just a matter of maintaining the status quo, it's a commitment to doing what's best for our kids. These dedicated professionals provide the specialized support many students need to thrive, fostering a love of reading, closing achievement gaps, and building foundation for a lifetime of learning and success. If you make these classroom, if you make them classroom teachers, we would lose valuable expertise in reading intervention, negatively impacting, impacting the quality of literacy education and support. Let's prioritize our students' futures by ensuring that we have access to the experts who support, and support our reading teachers. They deserve nothing less. Reading teachers, they are what's best for kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
My name is Colleen Turner, and I live at 10 Hazard Street in Newport. I have been teaching history at Rogers for 25 years. I love my job, this district, and the students who attend our schools. As a teacher and a Newport taxpayer, I am asking the Newport School Committee to step in to remedy the actions that have been taken by the superintendent and Ronnie Lee Mooney. It gives me no pleasure to be here, but you need to know that decisions that have been made hastily have caused great harm to many people in this district. I am aware that you on the school committee are often prevented from hearing the truth about what occurs in this district. We, as the citizens of Newport, deserve so much more than what we are getting. The amount of money that this district has to spend on lawyers to clean up avoidable errors is extraordinary. And my fellow, and my fellow taxpayers need to know this. Many of you are aware that MLL students have been a valuable part of our district for many years. Where other states have plans to increase MLL certifications that are supportive and purposeful, Jermaine and Mooney have created a disingenuous, genuine plan based on zero research in the field. We often hold Massachusetts up as a model for education. How did Massachusetts address the MLL issue? Well, for one thing, they started more than 10 years ago and began with requiring new hires to have MLL certification. Then they developed a positive plan to help more experienced teachers to pick up certification over the years. They offered many varied opportunities and supports for teachers. Here is a list of the ways that teachers in Massachusetts can work on the certifications. We have listed 27. 27. As you can see, it is an extensive list. Most importantly, they also had a positive philosophy of working with the teachers, a respectful and ethical approach that is exactly the opposite of the philosophy that we see in Newport from this superintendent. By contrast, here is Rhode Island's list. As you can see, there are only three opportunities for Rhode Island teachers at this point to obtain MLL certification, as Rhode Island is catching up to other states. And nowhere did Massachusetts include actions and threats like our superintendent did to fire and displace experienced teachers without any warning, just because she thought it would be a good show of her power, power that, by the way, I thought was vested in you and not her. Ronnie Lee Mooney works for both Newport and Middletown, most often from home. None of the professional development that she offers on her website was made available to the teachers of Newport. An interesting point to note is that Massachusetts-
We need to keep it not personal here.
An interesting point to note, it's very personal, actually. An interesting point to note is that Massachusetts also requires administrators to be MLL certified. For the record, only two administrators in this district have MLL certification, and Colleen Burns Jermaine is not one of them. Perhaps you on the school committee should replace her tonight because she does not have the MLL cert. The applause cost me a couple of seconds, but that would not be fair, would it? It wouldn't be right to arbitrarily remove a person from a job with ranker and vindictiveness and violate a legal contract. That should not be how this district operates. We are better than that. Do the city officials treat the fire department and police department with the same level of disrespect as she shows the teachers? So the task falls to you, Newport School Committee. It's time to do what's right for students. Respect the professional expertise of your teachers, throw out her plan immediately, and instead create an intelligent plan that is balanced and, above all, will actually help the students of Newport.
Thank you.
Let's really be careful, let's not use names of, of members. And stick to the time.
Good evening, Newport School Committee. I am Alex Lucini, NEA Rhode Island representative. In preparing my comments for this evening, I thought of what infamous Providence Mayor Buddy Cianci once stated, "All vision with no action is a daydream, and all action with no vision is a nightmare." It's unfortunate that the manifestation of this nightmare has been the unilateral actions that the superintendent of Newport Schools has taken over the course of this school year, as well as her proposed budget. The superintendent claims that her door is always open. However, earlier this year, the superintendent refused to speak to the TAN president while she was on medical leave. Her position, with no legal theory backing it, was to enter into an MOA with TAN to release the district from any and all liability for its actions. Near a legal counsel spoke to Mr. Conley about this situation and accused the superintendent of preventing and delaying conversations on the restructuring of schools. This manufactured crisis wasted time and was disrespectful not only to President Hull, but the entire membership as well. While disappointing, this is the least egregious of the actions I will discuss. The superintendent has balanced next year's budget on the backs of Newport's most vulnerable students under the disguise of restructuring. This budget includes a reduction of student-facing positions leading to higher class sizes, yet there's no reduction in central administration. A few weeks ago, I, I attended an in-person meeting with the superintendent, Director Jakes, and Attorney Conley to discuss MLL staffing, and yet the MLL director was not there. When specific data on MLL students was called for, the data points were not able to be given. It would be a stronger argument to keep this bloated central administration if the individuals in these positions were present and empowered to fulfill their duties. In another unlawful unilateral action by the superintendent, she improperly, involuntarily transferred more than two dozen educators. Some of these letters read like a minor league baseball treat. You're traded to a position to be named later, thus eliminating the opportunity for a teacher to select a position at the job assignment process. Further, TAN and this school committee should have no confidence that this was done following the collective bargaining agreement or in placing individuals in correct positions. In an email sent on May 29th, Attorney Conley stated to NEA Rhode Island Legal Counsel that the district did not have basic information on employees' certificates and needed the union to supply this information. If this is indeed the case, there is no confidence that the superintendent had access to the information needed to properly staff Newport schools for the upcoming school year. The superintendent has offered to retain some teachers as building-based substitutes, but not in their current roles. So why invest into substitute roles and not into interventionist positions? The superintendent has offered to assist educators in receiving their MLL certification, but would not honor their seniority and allow them to select an open position in the following year. In both of these examples, the superintendent seeks to use district funds with zero return on investment. Meanwhile, other districts would gladly hire these educators with these highly sought-after certificates.
We need you to finish up.
Sure thing. It should be noted that NEA Rhode Island's Legal Counsel is in attendance this evening, and it was asked that it be noted that there are currently four unsettled grievances, four unfair labor practice charges, and we have also filed a lawsuit in Rhode Island Superior Court for restraining order against Thursday's job assignment practice.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Kate Dusell, and most of you know where to find me because I have been teaching eighth grade in room 320 of TMS for almost 20 years. I'm passionate about my job, having built curriculum before we adopted one, mentoring other teachers, and organizing the annual and now famous Grade Eight Pancake Breakfast. Despite this dedication, 10 days ago, I received an involuntary transfer notice and now am uncertain which grade level I'll be teaching in September. Actually, the majority of teachers at TMS have received either a layoff, displacement, or involuntary transfer, causing a high level of turbulence as we finish this year. I know that we are navigating declining enrollment and a changing population, and that a reduction in staff may be warranted, but the way that these changes have been carried out was unfair to staff and is not in the best interest of students. My job description was changed from Grade A English Language Arts to Secondary English TMS, and I now wait for someone to decide which grade level I'll teach. This was unnecessary. My classroom and position still exist while utilizing my current certification, and there is no data to support that a change in my position is what's best for students. As a highly effective, well-respected employee with 20 years of service, one might think there would be a certain level of job security. These changes could have been made using the systems we have in place, the seniority list and the job placement matrix, and by displacing the minimum amount of staff necessary to make the changes happen. The systems we have take into account certification, evaluation, and years of service. Ethical leaders focus on the needs of students when they make decisions, yet these changes were not made with that principle in mind. Our district has less than 2,000 students, yet has over 20 administrators. I don't see a reduction of staff happening in that area, yet the professionals on the front lines, the teachers, are being culled in order to save money and a budget that seems to have plenty of funding for administrators. Several years ago, we had a situation where clusters were eliminated and we had to have split clusters. It was done carefully, and only the impacted staff members received letters of displacement. Positions went to the job fair to be bid upon. This time around, it seems that staff members have been thrown up in the air like a deck of cards with not much forethought about who will land where. Not only will our reduced staff be teaching larger class sizes and new grade levels, but we will also be expected to provide urgent intervention within the same 48-minute class period in which we teach our grade-level content. Intervention is not the same thing as differentiation, and it seems that the district is setting us up for failure. An educational leader should make the education and well-being of students the fundamental value of all decision-making, but it doesn't seem to me that that is what is driving these decisions. I urge the school committee to compel the superintendent to carefully reconsider these actions, I'm almost done, to in fact rescind the displacements and transfers and halt the job placement process, which was actually scheduled for the same day as the Rogers High School graduation, until it can be determined that the decisions that are being made are necessary and being used to improve the education of Newport's young people. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kim Heard, 14 Smith Avenue, Newport, Rhode Island. I have two children here at Pell, specifically my daughter. I'm here to just kind of speak on her behalf and other children and her situation. She's been getting math and reading intervention all year with specialists. She did not make qualifications for IEP, so my concern for her and other students is what's going to happen when we pull them back into the regular class for instruction. You know, while her teachers are phenomenal, they're focusing on 20-ish students, and these small groups have been so beneficial in her confidence. She has a passion for reading, she's getting excited to come home and do math, and I just don't want to see her spirit crushed and other students who have got this passion to learn, but if they get back into the regular classroom for instruction with other students, the time is not going to be focused on them. And I just ask that you reconsider and keep our kids at mind. Thank you.
Hello, Liz Barron, 3 Ledger Street in Newport. I am a parent. I have a son in first grade and a rising kindergartner, and I am here to express my concern about the cuts of the reading interventionists. Reading is by far the most important skill that our students need to acquire before they leave elementary school, and hearing that the data shows that our scores are declining and that we have more struggling readers and we have more MLL students, I'm really confused as to why we would pull back services, which seems like it should be the complete opposite, that we should be really amping up these intervention services and ensuring that all students have access to these interventions. I'm also confused with maintaining MTSS coordinators when they're, they can track data and they can identify students whose skills are lagging behind, and then what? What is the intervention? What's the tier-three support that we plan to provide for these students? It's a huge concern of mine. I think that's about all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Ozura, and I reside at 102 Warner Street in Newport. I'm here tonight because I have a first grader who has had the privilege of having a reading specialist help him out this year. Ms. O'Connell has been phenomenal. All of the teachers, actually, that my son has interacted with in the school have been amazing. We've had a great experience here, and I'm really concerned about the way that things are moving into the next school year, especially with my son. He's made great strides with his reading specialist. He comes home excited to read. She provides special books that are tailored towards his interests and really help him get focused on filling the gaps in the areas that he currently has with reading. He's improved his fluency, and, you know, it's just been a great year, and I hate to see all of that progress stop. I also have a kindergartner, a daughter who will be starting in kindergarten next year, and I just want to feel confident that she's going to be coming into a school that's going to be able to identify what her needs are and also be able to help her the way that my son has been helped. Just here to express my concern and show my support for the education system, and I just hope we can get everything figured out and get everything set for the teachers for next year, because I can really understand that not knowing a plan is pretty concerning. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for all your comments, and I'm sure there was a lot of thought that went into them. Appreciate it. We'll take them, if anybody has anything written they want to give to our secretary, we can distribute it and make copies. So next, I got to kind of regroup here for a second. We're going to have a discussion on this, and does anybody here want to make any comments?
I have a question for Director Gonzalez. What did the $2 million that we ended up giving to the Rogers Build do to our budget, and what will happen in the future if we have to give any more of our money to the Rogers Build?
That was a very heavy question. As I've expressed, I believe it was in November before the vote, I thought it was a bad idea, simply because it didn't fulfill the entire need at Rogers, and then was going to lessen our downhill slope. Now, we've been establishing these education fund balances to help us ease off transition from S of funding. In addition to, what I don't necessarily know that I planned for two years ago was a 20% to 30% increase in costs for just about everything. So those things kind of compacted some of the issues we were faced with for the last six months in developing a budget. So I believe at the time, the Rogers Build needed between $16 and $20 million for their gap at that time, and we, we contributed approximately 10% of, of that need at that time. And what it did was, it, it reduced our education fund, which was going to be tapped in, as we've done already with the budget presented here, we have an allocation of 1.2 from that education fund. Currently, the budget, excuse me, the fund balance for the school is approximately $3.9 million, which has two components. It has a contingency fund and an education fund. The education is, education fund is approximately $1.2, $2.2 million, and the contingency fund, which is our rainy day fund, to help support-
Correct. And that's to help us down this ESER—
Help us down the slope, yes. It helps us to a balanced position today. Just for context, our budget is about 83% personnel. 83% of our operating budget is earmarked for personnel.
I do want to mention something also. We will need that 1.1 for next year to maintain just the structure that we now have budgeted for for this year, as well as ask the city for additional funds going forward. Just want to keep that in mind. So it's not that we have that 1.1 and we can use it, and then next year, not worry about filling that hole, as well as everything else that goes up with meeting all contractual obligations, meeting the 2% to 4% natural increases, all that. It's a very, very tough year. Very tough. Yeah, I just—I know that this—between the ESER money that we had in, that we were trying to do some new things, the fact that, you know, the last few years, we've had to move some things that are operating budget into ESER funds because we had a couple of years that we didn't get any increase from the city, and the city is trying to give us more increases, that is true, but it's very difficult. I think then with the hit in the enrollment, combined with the ESER and the ongoing budget issues, it's been very difficult, and none of us have wanted to do any of this. But I did want to ask the superintendent—you have talked about the science of reading. Talk about that, please. And how many of our teachers are trained in that? And then the MLL certifications that teachers have gotten. Maybe you could just talk to the public and to the teachers on what your strategy has been going forward.
Okay, so I'm turning around because I know our teachers have been very good about getting the training of science of reading. The legislature extended that time, and for the audience that doesn't know, all teachers—because to Mr. Toribio's point, literacy is so important—that the legislature actually required all public school teachers to do the study of the science of reading. Depending upon the grade levels you teach—for the early grades, elementary, and our special education teachers—they have to take a very intensive science of reading course that's about 60 to 70 hours, and I took it as well, just to see what the teachers had to learn, what they had to do, et cetera, and to make sure that all our teachers had time in order to take that. So that course is very intensive. The second part is the exposure to reading, and I'm not getting the term down correctly, but that's mostly for secondary teachers, and that is—it's about a 10-hour—and again, it varies depending upon the individual—that's an additional 10 hours of study that teachers need to do. We've had quite a few at that level this year completed. We still have teachers that Director All has sent letters out just to remind them that they must get that certification—they must take that course by the end of this present school year, so by the end of 2025. We've also—when they take the science of reading—we also have either stipends that they're paid or they have release time from other obligations, but we've made sure in our professional development—and again, Director All is better to speak to the fine details of all this—but all of those things we've tried to put in place to make sure that all the teachers have those supports. That's the science of reading. The multi—
When will we know the plan? I just want to know the plan.
The point of order—point of order. We'll take a short recess if people want to leave, but—
Okay.
We're just going to not comment and wait till everyone leaves. You don't have to leave.
So I was asking for you to answer that question so they could all hear it.
So the MLL—we've had training for that and pay for teacher certifications for the past five years. They're also given time for professional development regarding that as well. Director Mooney has also offered several opportunities in professional development for people, and actually, it's on the schedule for this year as well—for teachers that may maybe not want to get their certification but want to know more about techniques and strategies for multilanguage learners. So that's just—I'm going to say—a snippet. There's a more comprehensive plan for the MLL, and she has been offering that for four to five years for teachers.
So one of the things that is important to me as an individual coming through schools is to not pull students out of classes all the time, because I was actually one who was pulled out of classrooms a lot, missed a lot of class time. So I think that it's absolutely essential that the teachers have all the tools in their toolbox and that we do push-ins and so on in the classrooms. So maybe you can talk a little bit about that.
Right, and that's exactly what we're trying to do. We have adults—that we still have positions in which adults—for those children that have—I'll say—I'll call it a Tier 2 or a Tier 3 level of need—we still have adults that can do small group pull-out, or ideally, we want them to push in and go into the classroom and work with the students. That is already set up, and I have to frank, people know that. And we also have coaches for the teachers to help them with the instruction in the classroom, because we realize—we all know—that for reading teachers that have been doing small groups and for MLL teachers as well, some of them will need extra support and training for the full classroom. But also, at the same time, we know that it's the Tier 1 instruction that we really need to beef up. For those in the audience that don't understand or know what that means, there are three levels of intervention. Tier 1 is your classroom instruction, where all children should receive the core instruction. We know that children have been pulled out during core instruction, and that is not a model we want to follow. Tier 2 is when you have small group pull-out or maybe extra support for children so that they can have some support and individualized instruction, more small group, that helps them to learn better, builds their confidence, as we heard tonight. And then we have the Tier 3, and that Tier 3 should only be in a school district that's doing Tier 1 implementation well. Doing the Tier 2, that should only be about 3% to 5% of the total population of the school district. I know and I understand that people are very upset about the small group instruction, about everything regarding, but the data has not shown—and I know firsthand, because I have some of you that contact me about it—the data is not showing we're having any kind of significant improvement. And that's why we went—we looked at the Mississippi model, we looked at how they addressed it, we looked at the importance of classroom instruction, and again, the research is very, very strong—that the teacher in the classroom is the one person that has the most significant impact on a child's learning and achievement. And that is why we are doing specifically a coaching model to help teachers improve—which we know they want to do best for students. We know they all work very, very hard. We want to put in the supports for them so that they can exceed, and our children can also exceed. And I apologize for all the chaos tonight.
Thank you for that. Are there any other comments on the—Mr. Dring?
Superintendent Jermaine, a lot of what I heard tonight was, "When are we going to know the plan?" So I guess my question would be, what does he answer that question?
Well, you know—I was going to call you Superintendent Dring. Mr. Dring, I think tomorrow, I'm going to just send it out again—the plan—and I will send it out email. I will hold meetings with all the teachers, if they'd like to do a Zoom. I know our principals know what the plan is. I know there's been conversation. I know at Thompson, the reorganization in the hybrid for Grade 7 and 8—the teachers are very aware of it. As far as renaming—renaming positions—we've had these discussions, and I've had these discussions with the teacher leaders about instead of being a Grade 7 math teacher, you're a Thompson Secondary Math teacher. That title is very important, because when and if we have fluctuations in enrollment, like we do now, and we have to do a hybrid, the principal can easily say, "All right, now you're Secondary Math, you're going to teach Grade 7." Are you going to do that? But it just is a matter of so we don't have to repost the position, have people go to the job assignment process again. The building principal just simply says, "All right." And I was a teacher that was hired on a bubble class, so I knew when the population was going up. Okay, most likely, I'm in 3rd, the bubble class is traveling up, I'll probably be in Grade 4 next year. And that's exactly what happened. Grade 4—I was put in Grade 4. I didn't have to go to a job assignment. We didn't have to go through all that. The teacher didn't have to go and bid on the position or do whatever, and that's simply the reason for some of the secondary comments that were made about retitling positions.
I just have one more question.
Sure.
I heard a lot about MLL certification. Can you explain the process for that? How long does that take?
One year.
So—
It's one year. Roger Williams, we've been very, very fortunate. They set up a cohort for us, and most of it is online, and we pay for the certification. Oh, and—that's right—MLL teachers get an additional stipend for that certification.
So if I was going to get an MLL certification a year from now—I'm obviously not going to be speaking a foreign language—can you explain what that certification is going to do? Because I don't really understand it.
I'm going to turn to Dr. Mooney. Would you like to come up and explain, since you've heard so much about Dr. Mooney tonight as well?
Hi, everybody. Okay, so with Roger Williams, that's the fast track of getting the certification. So it starts from June to June, and you get your ELL certification that attaches to your general ed base cert. So if I'm an elementary school teacher, then it attaches to my base cert. But once you apply to RIDE for your certification, you get a pre-K through 12 certification. But if I'm only elementary certified, I cannot teach a content at the middle or high school. So if I'm an 8th grade science teacher or a 10th grade history teacher, that cert attaches to that base cert, and I can teach that. So I will be dual identified. So I would be a history teacher and L certified. There's also programs at RIC and URI to get your masters as well in TESOL, teaching English as a second language.
Just to build off of what Mr. Dring said, so they're not learning a second language. They're learning tools and how to teach children who English is not their first language.
Correct. We do not have a bilingual model. Many of the students that come to us are not literate in their first language, and if we ever did that model or dual-language model, more teachers would have to be displaced in order to continue that from K through 12. We are keeping teachers in-house, asking them to get their certification, so we do not have to hire outside.
Because it's not just Spanish being the second—
Correct. We service world college students. We service students from all over the world. Or do everything that you can imagine.
This—I'm sorry. This entire process, everything—who got notified? Who was displaced? We purposely did it for the least disruption to the teachers. I was actually asked to lay off additional teachers, because the union felt it was more clear, and I went along and I said, "Okay, fine." And it was four. That's why you get another round of layoffs. I had laid off all I wanted to, but they wanted to for their process and they felt for their contract. I'm always willing to collaborate with them. I just didn't feel the need. Why do we have to lay them off? But we laid them off. But they'll have jobs, because I know those jobs are going to be back next year. I know for certain.
I was just going to ask, what percent of the teachers have their MLL certification or are enrolled in it?
Right now, 19 are certified, seven have started the new cohort.
And Roger Williams has offered—
And Roger Williams has extended their enrollment three times for Newport schools. I did also go over this plan with the elementary L teachers about two months ago, because I owe them the right to tell them as their director, "This is what we're doing to move forward," so they knew the plan exactly. And since then, no one from TAM leadership has ever approached me with any type of conversation, email or phone call, and then they took that vote, just so you're aware.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yes, Stephanie.
I'm talking about something randomly. You said it was at Pell you have nine certified and seven going through the cohort?
District-wide. District-wide. We offered to extend it district-wide for anyone that wants to join now, knowing that maybe repurposement of jobs have applied. We want to give you an extension to apply, and some took it.
So is it too late now, or they can still—
It ended Friday.
It ended Friday.
We can make a phone call if someone wants to do it.
Anytime anyone has emailed me, I put them through.
Okay, so we have a lot to take in tonight, and this is—the budget as it is today and with all the information that we have, so just to know if there needs to be changes or anything, they can always still be made within the budget if, you know, we figure out that something needs to change. But right now, we're asking that we approve the budget, which has to be done by July 1st in order to, you know, be in line with the—
Being compliant.
Being in compliance with the state, so with that, is there any other discussion on the budget? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, 5 to 2 have passed. Okay.
I forgot what point we're on, because that was—
6.9. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP number 3, from Gilbane Building Company, in the amount of $2,555,600. It is presented for consideration pending approval by the school building committee, which we approved on June 3rd.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Would you like me to finish the last part?
Yes.
If approved, the aggregate GMP total will be—okay, here we go—$104,846,000.
Okay. Do we have second? Is this vote right? Okay. Would you like to explain? Yeah, this is actually—we had approved the contracts through Gilbane. This is now just putting it into the legal document, which is called the Guaranteed Maximum Price. So this is all what's in the building itself, the pieces that are left. We've done one part of the site work, exterior site work. There's a— But right now, we're asking that we approve the budget, which has to be done by July 1st in order to, you know, be in line with the, yeah.
Being compliance.
Being compliance with the state. So with that, is there any other discussion on the budget? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, five to two have passed. Okay.
I forgot what point we're on because that was.
I know. Now we're going to.
6.9. I'd like to make a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price, GMP number three from Gilbane Building Company in the amount of $2,555,600. It is presented for consideration pending approval by the School Building Committee, which we approved on June 3rd.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Would you like me to finish the last one?
Yes.
If approved, the aggregate GMP total will be, here we go, 104,846,010.
Okay. All right, do we have second? I miss vote right. Okay, would you like to explain?
Yeah, this is actually, we had approved the contracts through Gilbane. This is now just putting it into the legal document, which is called the guaranteed maximum price. So this is all what's in the building itself, the pieces that are left. We've done one part of the site work, exterior site work, there's a, which we call Phase 1A. We have Phase 1B coming soon in July, and then the rest will all be in December. But this is, this doesn't have any of that site work in it. This is all just the building.
So there likely will be a GMP for, but possibly.
I ask this question every time we have to vote on something like this, and I ask, I'm going to ask it again. Why are we voting on this? We have the school committee, we're not the building committee.
Right, but this is a legal contract that has to be signed by the school committee.
It says, accepted by Rebecca Boland, co-chairperson Newport School Building Committee. Does not say Newport School Committee. This is exactly what happened last time.
Okay.
And I brought it up and it still says.
Should say school committee on there, but it's because it's with Gilbane, they hire all the subcontractors, so we don't have any input on the subcontractors. But it's when it's with Gilbane, then we need to do it because it's a follow-on contract with Gilbane, and we have the contract with them. We have to approve all the contracts, but not to subcontractors. Does that make sense? Get it?
Not really.
Well, we have a contract with all our primary contractors, which is Downs, Slam, Gilbane. And then we also have contracts with the inspectors and anything else, a few other direct contracts. But everything else goes, Slam has a ton of subcontractors, as does Gilbane, and we don't have to deal with those.
Has the School Building Committee voted on this?
Yes.
And recommended it.
And our lawyer went through it, and so did our OPM went through it very carefully and feel as if it met all the requirements.
Wouldn't come to, wouldn't come to the school committee without an SBC recommendation.
So this is really to finish the building, right? This is the last one to finish, just the structure.
The structure, right. And then there'll be more for site coming.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
I do want to just say that it should say school, school committee chair on it, not school building committee chair on the document.
Right. Okay. If it was co-chair, it should have said both of us, but it needs to say the school chair, chair. Sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm trying to beat our time here.
No, at nine.
Oh, nine, oh, okay.
Three hours.
Oh, wishful thinking. Action item 6.10, request from Mr. Leary to discuss and take action that would require a vote by the Newport School Committee on all requests for use of school parking lots for non-school events.
But we won't, we don't really have a motion right now, so we'll wait.
Should we move this to discussion?
No, he can make a motion, Mr. Leary. So we'll just turn it over to Mr. Leary and then it.
Right, I can do the motion. I'm obviously referring to our lawyer at this point, but we can discuss that going forward, if that's okay or no.
You want to, you want to make a motion right now or?
Well, we might want to add to it and figure it out as we go along. It's more of a discussion, but I think we got some action important coming up.
We just wanted to leave it in case.
Yeah, thank you. So, little history. Underwood, when it was in existence, the New York Yacht Club would use it all summer long, parking employees, parking people there. So I met with the New York Yacht Club, and they said absolutely. So they paid us $5,000 and they had the kids down for picnic on the lot, as much as they use it each year. So my concern is that, not against nonprofits using this, but number one, it should be a contract, should be approved in language by our lawyer, and number two, it's a school committee decision. It's our decision that we want, what we want to do with it. You have a folk festival and a jazz festival coming up, and you talk about people want to do bake sales. Well, park some cars down there for 20, 30, 40 bucks down there like they do at the folk festival, you make a hell of a lot of money down there things. And that can be just a PTO. Doesn't have to be us, let the PTO do it, you know? I know it's important to nonprofits, I know it's important to the bike ride, I think the people downtown are upset now with the use of Rogers, but they did say they'd be using the back pot, parking lot at corner two, Ms. Jermaine, but they used the front pot and had drills up front and they parked in the grass, everything up there by Wickham Road by where they took off. So they had both pots and they were all over the place up there. So there's no, there was no control. So I think with a contract, we could do something, and that's my biggest thing. And I mean, St. Patrick's Day parade, it's a wonderful thing. They park the buses down there when the bands get done, they walk past St. Augustine's Church, down to Rogers Park Lot, get in the bus and off they go. So I mean, some community things are very important, but there's also an opportunity for a serious amount of money. Parking in Newport is a nightmare if you haven't figured that out. And if you're going to Folk and Jazz Festival, there's a lot of cars that use that a lot, either known or unknown. So I'd just like to know, first, we have a contract and a language to protect ourselves.
That would be a Billy question. I don't believe we have one, but. Can I ask this superintendent? Dr. Jermaine, can you tell us, are we doing this today? Are we renting out the parking lot areas?
No, we're not renting it out. What we've been doing, like, for instance, with the Bike Newport event, we had police officers there. Bike Newport had police officers there monitoring and watching just all the traffic. I just want to clarify that. But since I've been here, for all our community partners, we've allowed them to use the parking lots, whether they were on Old Fort or whether it was on the other side. When Clooney School was in existence, Clooney School used to use it. When I was first here, they were using it. So that's really what's been happening. At one point or another, I do agree with Mr. Leary. Mr. Leary's right, we do need to have a lawyer involved because if we're going to start charging money, then we have some exposure as far as responsibility and possibly liability. I know St. Mary's Church at one point in time was going to use their parking lot for, to raise revenue, and I believe Mr. Leary, didn't they not do that for some reason? There was a legal reason?
No, well, I'm not sure. Legal problem, Father McCaffrey was not into doing that. I'm not sure if.
Okay.
The pheasant feast.
Yeah, no, we can check with the lawyers if you want to start doing that. I will say that there needs to be a lot of advanced notice because if you're going to take that over and approve it, for instance, we had a call today for some, there's a sailing regatta, and I did say, that's fine, just, you know, stay in the parking lot if you want to use it, if you need overflow. But that's what I mean. If we're going to have a practice of charging, then we need to be really clear to people how far in advance we need to know, et cetera. And I'd get a very good contract for when we do contract with outside agencies.
So, all right, so with Bike Newport, they said they're just going to use the back parking lot, am I correct?
No, they were going to use both parking lots. They always put the restroom, they put that on the front, and then they have the additional bicycles that they bring for people who want to ride bicycles, they put them in the front. So they do use part of the front on Wickham.
Nothing bothers me, but I think you have a text saying, you saying they're just going to use the back lot.
They were going to use just the back slot, back lot.
They didn't.
No, they used the other side.
Right.
Yes.
So, just, we get, just for example, I picked up a few parking tickets and looked at them. In the first line, every one of these things where your pocket says, all vehicles parked at owner's risk, no liability would be assumed by the management, or lost, damaged, fire, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So even if we didn't have it, we're just saying, go use what you knew that, I think there's a liability there, something could have happened, you know, something hurt when you say, well, we gave us permission, use it. Verbal said, go ahead and use it.
No, we get a waiver.
Typically, when I'm aware of this instance, I ask for a certificate of liability indemnifying Newport Public Schools. That's where they would get approval from the school, obviously that we don't have anything going on during that time period. And the second piece is a certificate of insurance that holds us harmless.
Right, so that's good. That should be attached to the things that we do.
Absolutely.
But I think there's, there's a lot of money to be made, these things. And if they don't want to make money, they may want to donate. They may say, you know what, why don't you send, we'll give you 50 tickets, or 20 tickets or 10 tickets to the Jazz Festival, take your students over, go to the Folk Festival, take your students over, so they could do something. I mean, New York Yacht Club, I thought they were going to give me a battle. They said to me, the Commodore, what do you want? I said, we want money and I want to do something. He said, I was $5,000 out. I probably could have said 10, he would have done it. And he just gave us the money and he had the kids down for picnics.
Since I've been here, they did do that. They've also met with me, and they did, and we put it in our revenues, and they have done that in the past.
Yeah, but now that more, it's private.
I think they'll donate. So the timing right now is what concerns me because right now, you know, we don't have athletic fields, we're looking for help from the community for all kinds of things, like in partnerships, it's kind of, you know, you scrub my back, I'll scrub yours. And I just think that the timing on doing this may be better after we get the school open, we have real parking lots. And in the meantime, we get all kinds of cooperation for athletic fields and things. And so I'm just concerned that that might affect that right now.
I'd be concerned if you're begging a lawyer to look at that because some people come back from the festival, have too much to drink, and start climbing on that new building, somebody falls. Be interesting what happens.
But pretty, hopefully it's pretty well locked up.
And I think it's.
So I would like to refer this to the lawyer for some advice and consent.
All right. Is that okay with everyone? Go ahead, Sandra.
Yeah, it's just, I think when Mr. Leary mentioned about, you know, liability, that's the whole situation because the school property, I mean, that's public property. So when people trip and fall, and of course, the city ultimately, I think, would be, have to be involved, make the reference to the parking at the church lot next to Thompson. Many people think that's public, that's a public parking lot. We tell some of our own parishioners, no, it belongs to the church. And therein is this business of, are you insured? And that's where that whole kerfuffle came. And, you know, and there were people who will take advantage of a situation, but considering also, we have fewer schools and fewer parking places right now, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, what is that noise? Gemma's fingers.
Somebody's feet.
Yes. Where's the band, I thought?
Sounds like. All right.
All right, so we're taking that to look, talk to our lawyer, I'll take that.
Yes.
This week, Bobby.
Yep. Thank you.
Personally, it seems to me, just to conclude on that one, is that at the moment, with the limited parking and all the construction, it should be probably not done this year, but maybe considered. I mean, next year, there's going to be a lot of site work being done in the parking lot, so next year's not going to be so good. But after that, I think it would be much more viable.
Stephanie? I just wanted to agree with like that last point. I hadn't really thought about it first. I mean, I think it's a good idea to make sure that this, we've always said this facility, we want it to be a community asset and something for the community to use. I think we would have the right, let's say we can charge for parking, I think we have that right. But, you know, even to Mr. Leary's point, like, we don't want people coming onto an active construction site that are not members of the school community. That, I think, you bring up a good point that we have to watch the timing on this.
Okay, all right. So we're going to move on now to.
6.13.
Yep.
Did you vote now?
We don't need to vote.
Oh, you're referring, just referring to, okay.
All right. A memorandum of agreement between the Rhode Island Department of Education and Newport School Committee is provided for consideration and approval. Ride has awarded the district $9,040 for the Get the Foam Out initiative from the SBA Capital Fund. The initiative is to assist school districts in compliance with the Rhode Island general laws relating to elimination of polyesterine foam and diversion of food waste.
Do I hear a second? Yes, I think we skipped one.
Did we skip?
We did. No, we pulled 6.12.
6.11.
Oh, I did skip 6.11. I skipped my.
Well, both have my name.
All right, let's go back to 6.11 then.
Sure.
This is my resolution for consideration and approval on the RIDE CAS assessment directions.
Okay, there's a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Sandra Flowers, and now, go ahead.
Would you like me to read it or just?
No.
Thank goodness.
I think it's late.
Yes.
There's nobody here really.
So this is. This has come out of a resolution that Exeter West Greenwich, sorry, West Ward. No. Exeter.
Exeter.
Thank you.
West Greenwich.
West Greenwich. Yeah, it is way late. Has put forward, and then I, after seeing their resolution, I engaged with their chair, co-chair and their superintendent to get a little more information, and I did some of the, looked at some of the assessments myself. This is all public information, it's all found on Ride's website. There was no test, we didn't get to see any current tests or anything. And what we did see, and I concur with their assessment, is that while the ELA instructions are written to grade level, the math RIDE CAS instructions and directions are not written to grade level. Reading them is, even as a grown adult, and I had a few other adults look at them, they are confusing, they use terminology that is definitely above third, fourth, fifth grade vocabulary level. Some of it I don't even know, it's like, who am I going to come up with what we were asking for? So it's just to have Ride, along with teachers and other partners, look at the instructions and make sure that for math, they are written at grade level so that students can read it and know what exactly the test in question is asking them to do.
I had asked in an email about having another whereas added to this for MLL because my understanding is math and science, you have to take your first year, whereas ELA you do not, and that's because you, it's numeric. But if there's so much reading in it, it seems like that should, that should be a whereas with that MLL population, they should consider, if there is a lot of vocabulary in it, to exclude that as well or something.
I think it might be late to add now though, so we just, we could write another one.
Okay, so we didn't do that.
No, I didn't see that, did you?
I don't see it, sorry.
I'm sure you did it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think also I misunderstood it because I know that they take the test in Spanish in their, it can be taken in their, their mother language.
For, for math again?
Yes.
Oh, okay, then that wouldn't be required then?
Yes.
Because they can do it in there. The math and science, they can take in their language.
Yes.
Okay, then it wouldn't be, thank you. And it doesn't need to be added.
I just wanted to say, I think Dr. Mooney has left, but I would love to run that question by her and get the language approved by her before, if we were to add something. So I like the idea of if it needs to be looked at, we do put another resolution together, we could follow this model, but let's ask the EL director to weigh in on it.
Well, if we just learned just now that they get to take the math and science in their home language, then it wouldn't be as required.
Sure, I, yes, there's different rules. But I mean, like, we just heard, you know, we know a lot of our students might be first, second year students here in the United States and aren't illiterate in their first language.
Right.
Or it's not, you know, that Spanish is available, or all the different dialects, you know.
Maybe we could make addendum to add a component just for MLL if Dr. Mooney agrees to that. I think that's a.
I mean, I'd even look at a separate resolution that just addresses.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm suggesting right now. Approve this, but then add something separate. No, well, I did the first time, but now I just changed that to say, and then we could send that, you know, in August after our next meeting.
Okay. Is there any other comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? One opposition.
Now I can go back to my other one. Sorry, I didn't even, I just want this night to be done already. Alrighty. Now we are back for the Get the Foam Out for $9,040 to reward the grant.
Okay, do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Winslow? All right, who'd like to, to one of the, moved and seconded, now we'll discuss it. Who'd like to speak on it?
Yes, so this is.
So this is a project that I'm very happy to see finally come. Great, my daughter started in second grade, where they talked about how we could eliminate food waste and waste and plastic in PEL. She is now wrapping up her ninth grade year. So this has been a long project. We are happy to say that we, Mrs. Winslow and I, and with help of the administration, we put in a grant for Ride. While we do not have styrofoam in our schools, they allowed it to be used to comply with the unfunded mandate of composting in the school. We're going to start with PEL, and our goal is to roll it out to Thompson and Rogers. But we know PEL creates our most waste. So we wanted to start with the school that has our highest waste. So we put in the grant, it was accepted, and it will be, we'll start this fall. We have the Rhode Island Jim and Ward, what is their?
Rhode Island School Recycling Club, also known as Rhode Island Schools Recycling Project. They put together the proposal for us with the dollar amounts, what we would need. And, you know, the grant was applied for with that information, and here we go.
Awesome.
It's fully funded. And we also have matching funds, if needed, from 11th Hour. Perfect. Thank you. Your hard work.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
Matt Jeff?
Yes.
Kendra, very good, thank you. I think you were there that day to begin the school year. I think it was second grade, I don't remember. They had counted, it might have been two teachers, the amount of styrofoam and stuff that they collect, plastic, that collected in the morning. It was a phenomenal number from two grades, two classrooms. It was, I can't even remember. It was, I'm sitting there saying to myself, holy Christ.
Yeah.
You know?
And the amount of, the weight of the waste that we throw away. We will also divert from the landfill. And it should lower our garbage hauling bill.
Right.
Since we pay by weight for that.
That will be the next thing we need to work on, Mr. Larry, this week. The garbage.
Yeah.
And the wrappers.
Tell you, I'm a composter, and my trash weighs nothing. After starting compost.
Yeah, I agree. I compost at home. And I, the only thing I throw away now are the plastic food wrappers. It's crazy. But yes, it was Sybil Greco's class, second grade. I just want to acknowledge her because it was an unbelievable presentation. And our parents there, and we were there, and I know members of the city council were there. And it was, the kids want to do this. And the experience of Rhode Island Schools Recycling Club has been just incredible response from elementary school kids. And even in the middle school, they're catching on. So we hope that this provides just a little bit more agency in the students' day and engagement, and a reason for them to come to school and share what they've learned with their peers and really know that they're making a difference.
Do you remember what that number was, by any chance?
I don't remember, but thousands of pieces. We could ask Mrs. Greco, and I'm sure she could give us the slides.
It was like, they tracked it every day.
A lot of that came out of COVID requirements, you know, that they had to individually package the meal kits. And then there's FDA requirements that say you have to give kids each item, right? From, they can't just take one thing for breakfast. They have to have the fruit, they have to have the grain, they have to have the protein. And so you have to give them the whole kit. It's very frustrating. It's a lot of regulation that forces that stuff to happen, and.
We do try to recycle anything that's not.
So this will help us take back the food that's unused and still wrapped, and donate that. And then any food waste would be compost.
We get a refrigerator.
So Ms. Munter said that we get a refrigerator.
Yeah, part of it is you get a refrigerator, so you can have a shared refrigerator. So any of the milk, the cheese sticks, yogurts can go right into a fridge. And then people can come, and yeah, and we don't have to worry about it sitting out at room temperature on the share table, or not making it to the, so it's, it's great.
That's awesome. Okay, so without any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, 7-0. Next, we have discussion items, absence, tea, and tardiness. Is there anything that, you know, we want to say about this? Anybody have any comments?
Nope.
Get it every. Thank you, Mr. Larry, for putting this on.
Yeah, Kelly, you have any comments on the absentee tardiness this past month?
Well, going forward, overall, we're getting our, I think, it'll be in the update tomorrow for my weekly. I believe we do have final numbers that I think Rogers overall increased by 9%. PEL, maybe 3 or 4. And Thompson, I think, increased its attendance by almost 24? 22 or 24? It's big. They keep going. The last month, Mr. Larry, the last couple of weeks have been challenging, especially with the sunny days. Yes, you are correct.
Okay, next, subcommittee reports. I think, is policy needed? Yes?
Sure. So the policy subcommittee met in mid-May, and we discussed a new policy, the Student Excellence and Success Policy. It's a draft, just a draft right now, but really to support the strategic plan and the portrait of a graduate. It's putting into writing sort of a lot of instructional practice and things to be mindful about for student and family engagement that we really hope people can read and take away, and just to remind us of the direction we're going in. So we'll review that again at our meeting next week. It's going to be on Tuesday night, June 18th, which is departure, because the 19th is Juneteenth. And that's the only thing on the agenda. If people have questions about policies they want us to review, please let me know. And health and wellness, we had our third quarterly meeting about two weeks ago. Got that right? And it was fantastic. We had a presentation from the Newport Prevention Coalition called Hidden in Plain Sight, which they set up a mock bedroom, and they show you all of the ways to hide. Oh, gosh, you could hide anything. Anything. But mostly drugs and alcohol. And it's all available online. And there's no way to, there's no ID checking or age requirements online. So it's shocking. You can see backpacks that look like camel packs with a, you know, a sippy straw in them. And you can see hoodies with the same thing. And, I mean, and the list goes on. So we're going to try to bring that to the PTOs, I think, in the fall. It's not too young in elementary school to talk to your children about these things. Not too young. Because, you know, the adults use these things at home, and the kids are, the kids are right on it. They know, they know. So it was a fascinating presentation. Then we, we have several substance abuse policies in Newport Public Schools that, like a lot of things, got a little outdated. We're going to form a working group over the summer to take a look at those and, and bring them up to date. There's some model stuff from the state that we can use as well. And the third update was our, was our composting update. Oh, excuse me. I meant the third update was for the Healthy School Meals for All Bill. That's in front of the House right now.
No.
No, just went.
Did not pass.
Yeah, okay. I lied. Okay, so when I wrote that update a few days ago, I was searching online today.
Today.
Yeah, I was, I didn't get the update. Okay, guys, well.
Got killed in committee today.
Local Newport Representative Marv Avney is the chair of the House Finance Subcommittee. So I can tell you how to write to him if you'd like.
Just to remind everybody, we provide free breakfast for all our students here at PEL. And we have a really robust program where kids eat in the cafeteria and get a hot breakfast a couple of times a week. So, you know, we do comply with that.
I just want to build on one thing that Ms. Winslow said. The most, well, not the, there was a lot of eye-opening things in the Hidden in Plain Sight. But for those who grew up maybe with a parent who smoked, and you would see them take a cigarette and smoke, and you'd be like, oh, you've had this many cigarettes. They had a vape pen that was about.
500 vapes.
As big as this mouse, and it holds the equivalent of 500 cigarettes. And because you can just put it up to your mouth and vape all day long, you have no physical concept or reminder of just how much you're ingesting when you vape. Because, and she said, kids can go through that in two days. So the equivalent of 500 cigarettes, they're going through in two, three days. Because you have, you do not have that physical reminder of lighting the cigarette. And also, you pause with the cigarette there, it's just constant all day. Yeah. And it's highly addictive. And I think as a society, we have to remember that when these kids, we have to provide them the services on how they can quit. We can't just tell them to quit. We have to treat it as the addictive nature that it is and provide support to get them to quit. It's not just cold turkey.
I'll elaborate that, you know, we grew up maybe with parents and grandparents who smoked, and we became the generation that saw what it did to them. And so it was easier for us to stop. But no one has seen the vaping generation grow up yet. The kids haven't seen the consequences. So this is the first generation to be using these devices and taking these drugs, essentially. It's tough. So it's, they are the vaping generation. They could be like our, you know, perhaps grandparents who paid the price. So yes, it's, and another thing that the schools are going to have to take on is the education and the help that the kids who might be addicted need.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on this one?
I'll just give a quick update on the school building committee. It's very exciting to walk through the building right now. Last Thursday, we went through and lots of wallboards going up. So you can really see classrooms come together and some of the offices and all of that. Wires hanging everywhere. I think, seems to me like in a, by the, another month or two, it's going to be almost every, probably this month, end of this month, is almost all the rooms will be wall boarded up, except for maybe some of the big, big spaces. It's 50% complete at this point in time, the building. And then the last thing is that next Thursday, I think the school, the city council will be taking up our request for $2.2 million request to continue the work at Rogers to keep it on schedule, with the last phase being in December. That's pretty much it.
Also, I just want to remind, if there are any school committee members that want to take a tour of the building, contact Louise or I. It's Thursday mornings at 8:30 in the morning. So if you haven't gotten in to see it, I recommend that you do. It's just, it's really awesomely overwhelming, the great.
Yeah. I guess I should, we all voted as a school committee on keeping NAC Tech. When it came right down to it, we had to do one or the other. We couldn't look at both alternatives. And so we had to not look at the alternative of keeping NAC Tech because of the expense, all the expenses have come in too high, and all the deductions are coming in too low. So we were unable to take that forward.
Also, it's keeping the NAC Tech building, not NAC Tech, just the building. Programs are staying.
Yes, thank you. And that motion was to explore it. And we explored it, and it's outrageously expensive, so. Okay. The next discussion item.
Is it fun time, cell phones?
Yeah, cell phones, okay. So Kendra and I put this on, although I've talked to many people who are very concerned about cell phones on the school committee. So we would like to have in July a workshop to invite, you know, our community, parents, teachers especially, administrators, to talk about this, to see, you know, because there are many of us that believe, you know, that cell phones. And if you read, we actually put some literature in here for people to look at. And we'd like to explore the option of making sure that kids don't have their cell phones in school on them. And so especially, you know, when we get ready for this new school building, and it's going to be safe over at Rogers with, you know, less three or four entrances instead of 78. So we will set that up here in later July.
I'd actually ask if we maybe hold a couple, just to give, like, maybe one July, one in August, just because I know a lot of people travel in July. So I just want to make sure families and teachers and anyone who wants to attend, there's a couple of options that they'll be able to attend.
Right. Whether you do it then or even wait until school year opens, might want to think about that.
We're hoping maybe we can get a pilot program. I mean, this is just a thought, obviously, but a pilot program going into middle school.
Matt Jeff?
Yes.
It's going to be, in the summertime, as Kendra mentioned, it's hard to get parents. But I would suggest you look into places like Center Falls, or really change theirs around, and have them come down and see what they did. Bring the administration down, or the principal, whoever did, to present whoever's there. Because it's, there's some ideas out there that are working quite well in some cities.
Right. And I, we definitely need to do some exploring between us, anybody that wants to help us too, just to find out where they've been successful and, you know, what their pitfalls are of it. And so we're ready for that.
Yeah, I think it's like quitting cold turkey. We've all become accustomed to using a cell phone. I saw everyone in the audience tonight on their phone, you know. So we, as the adults, don't even know how to operate without one. So I think it's going to take a little bit of reeducation on protocols, like, especially, we're going to have to, let's say we go forward with, you know, no more cell phones in school on the student. How do we educate parents about contacting their child? How do we make sure that it's the confidential contact that they expect now? What if they're afraid to call an administrator or someone to get a message across? So there are some sticky things that, you know, we, we might want to have protocols for just, how many of these kids today have ever held a landline phone? I bet there are parents who don't even remember. If they're in their 20s, you know? So anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
I think, oh, sorry. I think, you know, we didn't want to get to this point, but we've tried rewriting the policy. We've tried implementing the policy. It's just, kids are, hey, listen, where there's a will, there's a way. And I think we're to the point now where we know it's a distraction. We know phones are used for bullying. We know kids are on their phone when they're supposed to be paying attention. We know they're, we know adults are on their phone when they're supposed to be paying attention. We know phones are a problem. We are seeing, in the literature we provided, and we're seeing in other schools that have been implementing it, that it is a positive. It's not an easy positive. I think it's going to be a painful positive. I think Mr. Dring and I are going to hear a lot of complaints from maybe the people who live in our house to start with. But I think they'll survive. And it's just, we really have to, I mean, we tried. We've tried policies, we've tried, we've, we've tried. And it's to the point now where it's just, we've got to shut it down, I think. And we just have to figure out the best way and just make sure we have everything in place that our families still feel comfortable. And it's just, it's what it's going to have to be.
Go ahead, Sandra.
Just as a little bit of information, the first reading of this policy was March 10th, 2020. And then a few months later, and it was amended June 14th, 2022. And then amended again September 12th, 2023. And I think, I remember sitting right here with, we had tables and groups and parents, and mostly high school students came. I mean, it was a very cautious discussion. It'll be interesting to see if any minds have been changed. And we have to be very cautious to look, try to be as objective as possible. And get all, all sides of these particular issues. And be sure to get input from the teachers, too.
Two really quick points. One, this is a problem everywhere. Even Portsmouth reached out to me just a few days ago to ask, what's our policy on cell phones? Right? Are they having, everyone's having trouble. It's a worldwide problem. So maybe we need to ask Ride also for statewide funding and help for things like yonder pouches. But these are all items to bring up at a workshop.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I know, I just read in the last week that a major city just banned it, and I think I was just looking it up at Pensacola, Florida, I think. So, I mean, it's happening all over the place, and it, I think it's a, it's a good idea to try to do it.
All right. Hearing none of the discussion, I think that ends our discussion items. Next.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, do I need a second? Dr. Flowers on that? Okay. Okay, and let's go through, does anybody have any questions or issues with the minutes? Okay, sing them, we'll move on to invoices and requisitions. Somebody ask a question to make it worth this.
Oh, it was the shortest invoices and requisitions list I've ever seen.
End of the year.
End of the year spending.
We are closing all POs in less than two weeks.
I will say, there's a repair bill at Pell for 6,000 on the HVAC system, I think, 6,000 and change, I have it here.
You know what, matter of fact, I think that's actually good news.
That's good news?
I do, and that is because we anticipated a larger expense, if it's the one I'm thinking. I am not looking at the revenue report, but, but this is good news. About a month and a half ago, we itemized earmarks what we're going to use our contingency for, and then we didn't know at the time that the full impact of, we had a breakdown in one of our RTUs, and we were actually anticipating it was going to be at its, the end of its useful life, and we had, I believe it was Next Gen come in, and they figured out that it's, the impact to us will only be $6,000, we moved ahead immediately, that was an emergency purchase for us to fix the heating elements in the RTU, I believe it was RTU number two.
And then one other question, there's a rather large generator, we had to rent the generator.
So we ultimately paid that bill, that was the emergency backup here. We had temporarily had to rent an emergency backup so we could use this building after hour, after school hours, so we had, we had to put that in right away, and I think it was between four and six months to acquire the new generator. And it is, it is here, it's installed too. UCI P for that.
Any other questions on?
So you're saying there's a generator here?
The backup generator.
Is that the one out there?
Yes, it is outside in the back of the building.
How often is that going to go on, going to work? I can hear it inside my house, my house shakes.
How often does it go on?
I sit there and go, what the hell is that? And I go outside, I can't even tell you how.
Should turn on though, should?
I thought it was the backup.
There's something, there's something out there that goes off every once in a while that's very loud, something to generate.
You know, perhaps, perhaps there's something set, so that way it automatically turns on and cycles through, instead of freezing.
What's in there? That's why it went bad.
Ma'am Jeff? He said it was in free.
I don't know, actually, but I think that generators have to be run like once a week for a few minutes, so, you know.
But how often do you hear?
Seems like it's every few days.
I'd have to follow up, I'll have to follow up with the facilities.
If it's at a poor time, maybe we can adjust the time.
Absolutely.
For the neighbors, you know, do it during the middle of the day or something, instead of. Okay, definitely, that was, it's a warrant testing. Okay, all right, and then the last one is, any questions on the request for approval of home instruction? Okay, does anybody have any other questions under the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, passes, next.
I'd like to make a motion to accept any correspondence.
Okay, I see that we have two pieces of monthly correspondence, it's second by Louise about, right? And, and one of them is very interesting, but I don't know if you all have read it, but the AT&amp;T wants to break our lease on the cell phone.
Cell phone tower.
Cell phone tower.
Going to break the lease, or is it coming up?
It's coming up to an end, but they, they don't want to renew. They don't want to renew.
Yeah.
Yeah, not break it, but they don't want to renew it, and they reserve the right to maybe try to come out early, so, but no matter what, it ends in, read it again, when does it?
March 31st, 2025.
March, yeah, so it's good timing with the new school, but we need to let also the people working on this site know that, because they were concerned about a road going up to it at one time.
Right, so we wouldn't need it at all.
Yeah, so we need to just relay this information.
Can do that tomorrow morning.
Do that tomorrow morning. And the other piece was that we've been told that our apologies, apology, policies concerning transgender and gender non-conforming policies are conforming.
Outstanding.
Yeah, and outstanding policies, I, so, thank you very much to our policy subcommittee, who does a lot of research to make sure that we're in compliance. Okay, so any other questions on those before we, all right, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, raise your hand.
Correspondence.
Correspondence? Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes, next is 10.1. Okay, this is Mr. Gonzo's. Oh, we need, we need to have a motion to accept the reports.
Do you want me to put these together, we're past our time limit?
Yeah, we are, no, 9:30 is our time.
Put them all together, oh, 9:30, okay, just put them all together.
Yeah, you said three hours?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to, what am I, where are we? To accept all the reports, thank you.
Okay, do I hear a second?
As presented.
Okay, are there, any, anyone that wants to pull out something for the expenditure and revenue? How about restrict your grants? How about college and career readiness?
I just have one quick question on that. I was one, sorry, wondering how many seniors, if you know, are part of NACTEC or are pursuing a NACTEC program? I'm sorry.
I apologize, I don't have that.
I don't think you know that, I should have asked Director Young, I will. I know it's the majority of Rogers students, I was curious what percentage of the class or how many students in the class.
Okay, enrollment, career readiness, by the way, it was a very nice report by, with pictures and all kinds, Ms. Clark, so if anybody sees her, please thank her for that, keeping us up to date. How about 10.4 enrollment demographics, any comments? And the superintendent's update, is there anything you'd like to add? Nope, it's all there in writing. Okay, so hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of accepting the reports, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, next, meeting dates and agenda items. So obviously, we want to try to set up a meeting, we'll work with Mrs. Nash and administration to do that. I also want to tell everybody that graduation is the 13th, everyone's invited, it's at 6:00 PM, and, and I will, we're going to do something a little bit different that this year, the school committee is going to recognize many students that following something we saw at a different school will surprise everybody with it, but it's really going to be pretty awesome, and we'll thank everybody, you know, all graduates and their families, so, yes.
I can't really hear you.
I'm sorry, it's late. All right, sorry, but anyway, so graduation, lots of things going on, lots of meetings, check your calendars between now and then, we're hoping that the one on the 12th, that's, was it the 12th that's canceled, not the 12, the 13?
Thursday.
13, yeah.
The morning, the morning one.
Yes.
Everyone behave at prom.
Yeah, we'll do it if we need it, but if not, just watch your calendar, see if it's canceled. Okay, any other, anybody else have anything? Anything we want to add?
Make good choices.
Okay, hearing nothing, and I have a motion to adjourn, made by Ms., made by Ms.
Winslow.
Yeah.
Anyone?
I did it.
Someone with hair.
Seconded by Ms. Dr. Flowers. Meetings adjourned.
Someone with hair made the motion, someone with hair.